Can I ask you one change? All right. Is there any addition to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we are asked to do one little change to bring the 7B prior to 7A. So if we could have the motion to approve with those changes.
So vote.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Welcome to Larry Peterson from Temple City South, thank you. Could someone approve the minute of October 2nd? Counselor Creed so approves. Any comments we find? Yes, okay.
Motion to vote on that then?
Motion to vote on this.
Minutes.
The minute of October 2nd, all in favor? Yes, thank you. Carry it. Now if you note, we have the delegation at 6 o'clock. It will be an in-camera delegation. It has to with another business. And we will start now with business arising. Now, if you look on the 7B, we're going to start to deal with all the bylaws. Bylaw 1616A was a dog control bylaw. And Counselor Creed mentioned at the last meeting that there were a little bit of difficulties with it by law because we had an amended bylaw and needed to review the whole process of how to approve such a bylaw. So if you look at it, the yellow portions of that bylaw are the changes that have been made. The schedule now conforms with the language of the bylaw. The little word "as" has been added. So any comments prior to asking for a motion to recommend?
Yeah, we would, now that we can recommend this now to the council.
Yes, a motion to recommend that we need, would you like to?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Counselor Creed moves to recommend for approval. And we need to make sure that it is the way we want it because we don't want it to come back again at this table. So are we feeling comfortable with it? Yes? So seeing no other comment, can we vote to recommend?
No, not first reading, just to recommend to council.
Recommend for readings, okay? All in agreement? Thank you. So this is carried.
That's his crippled hand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you took care of his hand. Now, bylaw 15A to B, the utility rate bylaw, has a definite impact on the budget, on the revenues, and we need to have administration present some further information to us. Marion, would you do so?
Yes. As discussed earlier in our budget meeting. As discussed last week in our budget meeting, this bylaw is prepared based on our utility projections for reaching a goal of self-sufficiency, fully funded utilities for sewer and water by 2016. So we've got the next three years' projections in this budget, or in this bylaw. At that meeting, we did not have a clear feeling from council whether this was a direction that you still wanted to continue in, or if you want to make some adjustments to that. So what I've asked Ryan to do is just have a little bit of information here tonight. Based on your discussion, we can go in to the documents and make changes to the rates that would show you what the impact would be to the utility. So I guess what I'd like to see is some debate or discussion by council as to whether this rate is either sufficient to meet your goals, if you would like to extend the goal beyond 2016, and then we can adjust these accordingly. But bottom line, it's going to have an impact on the utility revenue, right? So I'll leave that to you, and then we'll have Ryan just manipulate those numbers for you for discussion purposes if you'd like.
You're going to show us different scenarios, or you have those here? Is that what you want us to look at?
Yeah, your scenarios for the impact to the residents are in front of you. This document has the water and sewer increases, and we took some samples. Just go back up here where I've got a mic, I'm sorry. So I've got scenarios for a grocery store, a retail store, a professional medical service, gas station, convenience store, a couple of restaurants, car wash, a garage, and a dentist. And you can see on there the impact both dollar-wise under the increase for water and sewer, the total increase of the two, and the percentage increase for 2013, 14, 15, and 16 based on our projections. The second page has a random sampling of a seniors facility, a church, a couple of churches, maintenance shop, a couple of schools, and a couple of small churches with the same scenario there. And the last page is a random sampling of strictly water. And the reason we did that is because for residential purposes, all residential properties would go up $4.50 a month for sewer because it's a flat rate. So this is simply the water analysis, and you would have to add the $4.50 for the sewer on top of that. So I think what I understood from discussions at the budget meeting, and as well a couple of counselors have talked to me since then, is that perhaps the 2016 goal may be a little too aggressive. If that is the case, we need to know that from council so that we can adjust these rates. And like I said, we can show you what that impact would be here, so.
Okay. I was one of the counselors that came and saw Marion. I totally support the principle of sustainability in time. But I wondered if to increase all utilities at once, which would bring the percentage up a fair amount, was, from a socioeconomic point of view, a wise decision.
And by sustainability, you mean cost recovery?
Cost recovery, yes, yes. So that was essentially my concern. And I had a further concern. We are one year before the elections also. I would not want the election to be run on utilities. Because all the good works that we have done up to now to bring those utilities towards sustainability could be lost overnight, and I would find that very sad. Because from a town point of view, sustainability is the way to go.
I think we have to consider what has to be done, how soon, and if we're doing it too quick, is it fair to our people in the town to do it? Or do we drag it on a little further just to soften the blow?
Okay, so this is a consideration Marion was talking about. Can we reduce the rate and how does it impact? Or there are also some other tax possibility. Is that a possibility to reduce the tax for capitalization and keep the rates up? Let's take one, soften the other.
I would move that we recommend to council to give this first reading, and then we're going to be talking about the community awareness evening a little later on in our agenda, that we bring this to the public and show them what our goal is. We get the feedback from the public, and then at that point, when we've had the public feedback, then we can look at it and say, okay, we can pull back. And, you know, we have that option at that point to still amend it and to soften it. But I think we need to show the public what we want to do and what our goal is, and then get some feedback. I think the community awareness evening would be a good time to do that.
The only problem, we might hit hundreds of our taxpayer.
Yeah, I know we're not going to hit everybody, but we'd get a good sample.
And we have quite a few of them that we need to get input from.
Got a question.
Sorry?
I'm not opposed to extending it out, but we need to understand, and the taxpayer, the rate payer needs to understand that if we're subsidizing this, that money's coming from somewhere else. It's not like we're all of a sudden going to lay a bunch of it onto them. Because that money that we have to use to subsidize people's use of these facilities is going to come out of rec or whatever else it might come out of. So it's not like we're giving anybody a break because they're still going to be paying that tax from where or another.
May I ask you?
In the multi-week process that we entered into primarily in June to go public with our Fortis offer, we know that a lot of people who came to the open houses and who came to the formal presentations were concerned about their utility rates. I think that's probably a given. We also heard a few people say, don't sell the asset, and we're not as concerned about the impact on our utility rates.
I think for the electrical, may I ask you? We already have prepared the people that we were going to raise the rate to the Fortis rate. So I think that is already that. I think we're more concerned at this point about the water, the sewer, and can we apply the same reasoning towards those utilities at this time?
So I've got a follow-up question then, Madam Chair. And I like Counselor Creed's motion for first reading, and I also like the suggestion that in the night of the community awareness, I'm just going to look at the calendar and see, do you expect we'll go to public hearing on the increasing utility rates via these bylaws?
Wait. My hope would be that we would be to public hearing by? The December council meeting, because it's the intent that it would take effect January 1st.
So I quite like Counselor Creed's motion, and because it does, what it does is it gets the ball rolling, and then we take some information to that community awareness night, and then we'd be prepared, probably, you think, for second hearing, the second reading the night of a public hearing?
Is there some way to communicate to the public in another way, a little bit wider, with a wider audience, those rates and the impact?
We could put together a communication piece that we could distribute through the post office boxes or something similar to what we've done with the, when we did the Fortis open houses. We could have that prepared so that it would be in their packages or in their boxes prior to that meeting, and we would say council will be at the aware evening if you would like to come speak to counselors individually about it. We could put that as part of the communication.
Is there any way to put it right inside their electrical bill? I know NMAX does billing for us, or is there any way that it can go right with our utility bills?
Um, we could, yeah, we could get an insert in there, I think.
That would probably be the best way, because while they're thinking about utilities, they're going to see that piece, and they're saying that there's going to be an increase.
It might be too late in the month, though, to get that to have it.
Yeah, but even next month or whatever. I mean, as long as people are, you know, are, I mean, people are smart enough to understand that things just, well, hopefully they're smart enough to understand that things just don't get built by themselves. There's actually a fee attached to everything that they use and everything that they do.
Oh, you tell me.
And, you know, I mean, I would like to just, just like a Band-Aid, just rip it off with one, just get it over and done with instead of dragging it on and on and on. I mean, once the initial pain's over with, then it's.
Counselor Edmonds, what's your position on this?
I'd like the motion that's on the floor to the council. It's going to come regardless, so happy with it going ahead with the plan that we have.
All right, so in that case, you have a motion on the floor. Do we want to vote on it? Okay, so it's a motion to, would you like to state your motion?
Yes, to recommend to council to give first reading to the bylaw, and then present this to the public at the community awareness night so that we can get public input before we do a public hearing and proceed with any other further readings.
And do you want to add the communication piece?
Yeah, whatever communication we can.
We could also go on the town website with this information. We could also go on Channel 32 with this information.
Facebook, I can put it on the Facebook page.
So.
Also, like we have to, council has to realize that there's going to be an outcry, and the people that are going to come in here, but are not going to be in favor of the rate increases. So I mean, council has to keep in perspective what the point of the rate increases are, and that's to maintain our utilities throughout the, and it needs to be run as a business or infrastructure can be replaced over time, and this is why the increases are taking place, so.
This is what needs to be communicated essentially.
If someone gets cornered by somebody, you can't change your mind, you have to keep the big picture in mind. This is, you know, this is for the betterment of the community, not for, you know, personal gain or making money, so.
Just brought to my attention, and it's a good idea, one of the things that we can also do through the website is an online survey. So we could just put out there, you know, kind of questionnaire about this is what the proposed increases are and how do people feel about that, or, you know, do they support that based on the rationale for why those increases are taking place, yeah.
Counselor Edmonds?
If we tell our taxpayers in our town that we're raising utility rates because utilities in the past have been supported by taxes, are they going to expect the reduction in their taxes because of the increase in their utilities?
Okay. Marion, do you want to address that? Essentially, from my perspective, that doesn't kind of go hand in hand quite like that.
Right. What we'll do, as council's aware, we have a capitalization policy, and the intent of that was to put tax dollars towards repair of infrastructure. So we'll look at, as we're able to collect some of the amortization, we may be able to reduce that capitalization policy. But if you remember on the three-year budget projection that we gave you, the grant funding that we've been using in the past, we, in the next two years, 14 and 15, are actually able to allocate some of that grant to some recreation and some parks, capital purchases that have been on hold because we've been using those grants for other purposes as well. So yes, we will look at what the impact will be on taxes, but remember, we've been using grants to subsidize these a lot as well, not necessarily tax dollars. So just so that's clear.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Carry it.
That's for a recommendation.
Yes, it's a recommendation. All right, let's go.
I would move to recommend to council first reading of the electric rate bylaw.
Okay, great. Any discussion on this?
Are you thinking with maybe similar discussion in the community as well on that? Even though we did talk about with the Fortis, but since we're bringing one up, should we bring both of them up?
Could I add a little bit of?
Friendly amendment?
Well, yes. Marion, if I remember, could you recall the communication that was given to the public after we rejected the offer to Fortis? There was a portion inside there that said that in the future there would be an increase in rate to equate Fortis rate, if I remember right?
Yes, that's true. Part of the communication piece was that council's decision was based on the intent that utility rates, electrical rates would increase so that you could accomplish a similar rate of return on the utility as you could on the investment.
And that was posted about a month ago or so, a little bit.
In September, yeah.
In September, yeah. And have you had any feedback regarding that communication?
No.
Could I get a follow-up, Madam Chair, from administration? Marion, you mentioned in the communication piece on the resolution not to sell Fortis. Did I hear you use the word utility and electricity?
Electricity, sorry. I did say both, but I said utility, and then I corrected myself with electrical utility.
Yeah, it was.
So Madam Chair, I think I'd like my motion to stand without any additional communication pieces.
All right, okay, fine. So let's be ready to vote, all in favor? First reading, thank you. Carried.
To recommend to council first reading.
Yes. All right, so now we're going to deal with 7A. We have seven item of business here. There is community awareness evening coming up. The date is the 26th of November. It's the 25th anniversary of community awareness evening that night. And we have the opportunity, of course, to have a booth, as we did last year, and to have some questions for the public. Utility might be one. The pool financing might be another one that we might want to consider that same evening. Do you have any input regarding what we could present to council, to the public for questions that, where we would like to have a little bit of a survey result?
Well, my concern would be that as long as the evening doesn't turn into a negative experience for people going and getting the information that their utilities are going to be increased, or, you know, I mean, I don't know how well that's going to play into, you know, an enjoyable evening for someone to go in there and find out their utilities are going to be going up there. So I don't know, I don't know if it's the right place maybe for it, or it should be a positive experience for families and kids and things like that to go and throw utility rate increases to people. I mean, that might detract from the purpose of that event there, so.
Interesting point.
I think it should be, give the community an opportunity to see what we're up against as council in trying to balance our budget. I would be willing to build a balance scale with some blocks and work with administration if they could put what our incomes are and what our expenses are, and make an interactive thing for the kids or families to try to put, you know, and maybe realizing, maybe some of the blocks will be glued on because some things we don't have any control on changing, but some things we do have control on changing, and I think it'd be good for them to see that we could increase this, or, and whether we do it for the whole budget or whether we do it just for a particular utility, or whether we have a couple of sets of blocks for both, but so that they could see, you know, what we're up against in balancing a budget, expenses versus income. I think that would be something that we could do.
Interesting answer.
I've got some other questions that I thought would be interesting to ask as well.
Do you want to share them?
Yeah, I could. One of the things, I thought last year we had some good results from our survey, and I've tried to use some of those results as guidelines in my voting on different issues. But I think we still need to try and get an input on, you know, what they would like our community to be. We got a lot of things last time about, you know, what they like about our community, and we've talked about what our brand should be, and I've put that as one question that we could ask. What would they like our community to be known for as a brand would be something. And I thought, you know, as we've talked about the pool, we've said, well, we've been lacking really serious commitment from the community, so I think another question, what would you and your family be willing personally to do to improve the community, you know, whether it's pool or whether it's on other, I asked for people, what kind of a personal commitment would they make to the town? I don't know how exactly we'd word that question, but that would be the intent of the question, is what kind of personal commitment would we have? Also, in reference to our electrical utility, I think it would be a positive thing just because we did have most people say that they didn't want us to sell our electrical utility. I'd like to ask the question, do you agree with the town's decision to retain our electrical system? I think, and just to see if we get a confirmation from the community if they feel like that was a good decision. And the other one is something that I've brought up previously, and we've never acted on, but I've talked about removing fluoride from our water supply as basically my intent is saving a cost savings in that budget item. I know we've cut $5,000 from other areas, which might have been valuable, but I'm thinking, here's something year after year, if we're not getting a real benefit, I mean, you know, I think, personally, I think it's just outlived its usefulness. I think we have toothpaste now that have fluoride in them. But I'd like to just ask the community, we talked about that when the issue was brought up previously, that at some point we would ask the community, we talked about watching what Calgary would do, we saw that, but we've never actually asked the community what they feel about it, and I think that's another question I would be, I would like to see asked.
Counselor.
I can agree with both of them except for the Fortis one. I think we've beaten that thing to death.
Yeah.
I mean, we passed it, let it go.
Okay. Any other comments? Do we feel comfortable with the questions that are proposed by Counselor Creed for that evening?
I don't think we need to ask the public whether they approve the decision or not because they were effective a part of the decision in the discussions we had in our town council meeting.
You're talking about the Fortis thing?
The Fortis one?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
I think we better not overload the public with topics and discussions and choices. I think we should be just a little judicious, if that's the right word, on what we present to the public. I think it's okay that we have this information about utility increases, water and sewer, especially at the beginning ones that are involved, and the building block idea with some that are glued together has got some.
Very interesting.
Yeah, it's got some innovative aspects to it. I just think we need to keep it simple, and so.
So how do we like to proceed? Do we want administration to look at the list of questions that were possibly given by Counselor Creed, get them back on the next council and make a choice?
And we'll have next Tuesday night to make some final decisions.
Okay, so we will make a choice on those questions. Could you maybe make a list of them?
Okay, we normally mans the booth or persons the booth.
We take rotation.
Is it counselors or administration?
Counselors. It's a night to allow the public to visit with us. It's a night to allow the public to visit with us, have a chat. Marian?
That was a question I was going to ask, actually, if we could schedule so that we make sure we have someone there to man the booth. So I'd need some, if you can contact me and let me know what time you intend to be there so we make sure the booth is covered all night.
It starts at 6 o'clock.
6:30.
6:30. But we need to be there for 6:00, make sure that everything's going right. And it goes up to 10 o'clock at night.
8 o'clock.
8 o'clock?
6:30 to 8.
So it's not bad, two hours.
Yeah.
All right.
Maybe 45 minutes per council.
So Marian, is that enough information for you to bring back the question? Thank you. All right. 7A2, policy C27, public presentation to the council, a policy. This is a policy that was drafted to kind of put in writing what was known only. Administration, when they had a delegation come, used to tell them, this is what you need to provide, this is what you need to provide. Now it's in writing. So it's a policy put in place to formalize the unwritten policies that the town has regarding participation of members of the public who want to make presentation to the council. And it's our committees and it also addresses a process to be followed to obtain approval to make a presentation. So any discussion, comments?
I'll move it. I'll move it. You can take it to council for approval.
All right. Any other questions? Mayor Skow?
I think it's important and I do believe that administration will handle this as they have done in the past, but I think it needs to be clear that people can come to council and say, I'm not in favor of this and, you know, tell us why they're not in favor or words to that effect. But civility, decorum, and respect must be maintained because it has no place in this form. Again, they can express displeasure, but they must use civility and tactfulness and courtesy in so doing.
Okay. Thank you very much for that input. It's very important, as we know, in the past.
Actually, I want to make similar comment. I'm glad that they're putting a policy. I, you know, seen people come to council before and embarrass themselves and the council. And I think people need to be supported in making presentations to the council, but sometimes they don't know the proper etiquette and what they're supposed to do. And I think that we need to give them the proper support. And I think this policy is a good way to start with giving them support to make presentations and to do it in a way that they can feel good about it and we can feel good about it.
Okay. Did any of you, while reading the policy, felt maybe it was restrictive as to who can present or not? Or now we are, if we have different people that have opinion on the same kind of item, they will need to have someone to speak for them because we will contain similar comments?
And this again is something that administration, I think, has done a very good job of. I believe in all fairness that we have agenda time and should always have agenda time as a council for individuals who are taxpayers, for individuals who reside here and have the right to vote here, may not be taxpayers directly, but those are two categories. And failing that, like, I'm not sure we have agenda time for someone that might want to come and present some objections of some kind and yet may not be part of the community.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor, a motion to recommend for approval to council. So we're going to vote. All in favor? Carried. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Just for council's information, we have got a hold of the delegation and asked if he could be here at 5:30 because we're moving through the agenda fairly quickly.
Oh, I'm doing a good job. Thank you.
Just so that you're aware, he will be here slightly before 6:00. So don't drag things out purposely to have him here at 6:00.
All right. 7A3, represent dossier that Marian has put together with people, community in Bloom Committee. This is just a description of what the community in Bloom does. Councilor Creed, you sit on that committee. Would you like?
Yeah, we need an approval.
To talk to it? Yes.
I read the dossier. It looks good to me and I would recommend to council that we approve that.
If I could recommend process to speed things up.
Yes.
I'm all in favor of adequate discussion, but it's also nice to have a motion to discuss. So are you making that recommendation?
I am. I'm making a recommend motion to recommend that we approve that dossier for the community.
Okay. All in favor?
Don't forget to call for discussion.
Any discussion? Yeah, no? Okay. South Grove Regional Initiative dossier. It's one that a committee that I sit on, I reviewed the dossier. I believe it is properly, contains proper informations. So I would recommend that we approve this dossier.
Call for motion.
Yeah, okay.
Call for motion.
I'll make that motion.
To recommend for approval. Okay. Any discussion? None, seem none. Should we call to vote? Thank you. The Brownlee Emergent Trend Seminar is a seminar that is given by a group of lawyers that work for municipalities and that keep us abreast of the different legal issues that arise and could be of interest to municipalities. So if you are interested to go to that seminar, please let Marian know. I will go to that seminar.
I was just going to comment, Madam Chair, that there clearly are some issues here that I think would be a benefit to administration.
Water waste. Marian?
I do intend to.
Yeah.
Attend.
So I will attend. Marian Skow, are you attending?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so I will be going there.
May I take on this one?
Councilor Coat?
Marian, what's our?
Okay, can you raise your hand so Marian can see who's going? Councilor Coat? There.
And the three.
All right.
Yeah.
There was three, correct?
Three plus Marian.
I just want to determine, is there a, I'm looking for a date.
7th of February.
No, as a cutoff to tell them you're coming.
Normally, they don't have much of a cutoff.
Okay, all right. I'll withhold my decision on that for a few more weeks yet.
I will need to book hotel rooms though.
Okay. And just the Calgary? Hit it, Calgary.
Okay.
30, 30 feet north. Yeah, put me down. Marian, put me down.
All right. 7A6, it's a land sale incentives. And since Counselor Smith brought that to the attention of administration, if you could maybe talk to that initiative?
Well, I just, yeah, I just clocked it on actually CTV News there. There's a town in Manitoba, Reston, Manitoba, it's a town of 550, so population's a little bit different, but their town was going through a little mini oil boom, you know, similar to where we are. We've seen oil drilling and things going on around here. So we're kind of in a similar situation. Their town was going a little bit stagnant, weren't getting any growth in things they've got. So they offered an incentive of purchasing town lots, residential lots for $10 a lot there. Now, the services went to the property line. They had all its services in there. So they went to the property land, to the property line. They said that there was 100, usually 100,000 hits a month on their website. And after that was brought out there, there was 3.5 million hits to their website. So they've had huge interest in that. Half of it, there's 24 lots are for sale, 13 have already been sold to those as well. The enrollment in school has increased and the towns is starting to increase in, obviously increase in population. They figure the program's working so well that there's another 24 lots next year that they're going to put up for sale. So I mean, it's not, I'm just kind of bringing it to your attention that maybe this is something we need to think of, maybe not from the residential point of view because we do have a lot of developers that have put money into developing their properties, but maybe in the way of industrial area, maybe we can put an infrastructure in there. I mean, if we're not doing the full pool, let's maybe take some of that, put some infrastructure in there and then offer an incentive like that. I mean, they have, obviously, there's regulations and guidelines. They had to start building within 90 days and they had to be finished within a year type of thing. They had, they said they had hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of applications that came in for those, for that incentive. But I'm thinking our industry is slowly falling apart around Cardston. I mean, there's just little to no industry at all in Cardston. So I mean, we need to almost do something bold like they did to attract that kind of attention, you know, to maybe bring some business in town. And if we can install the infrastructure and have them build, you know, a building, not just for, not just for storage or for, not just a tent, but an actual physical building that we can actually create revenue off of for a long period of time. I mean, that's, that's the kind of way we need to go. I think just putting the land up for sale for, for the assessed value or the market value of the land is not going to work in Cardston here. I think some bold needs to be done and, you know, something like that. I mean, that's going to grab attention. Obviously, it shows the town 550, it grabbed a lot of people's attention all the way from Africa, they said. So Africa, Winnipeg, all across Canada, they got, you know, hits on their website from all these people asking for information on them, so. But just for thought, I mean, it'd be nice to know what, you know, maybe you think about it. Like I say, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to go residential with this, but in the terms of attracting business or industry to the community, that maybe this is something that we need to do, something that we need to get bold with. Let's take that money and, you know, build infrastructure in there so those lots are ready and then sell them for dirt cheap to bring business in. And like I say, we don't want storage lots all along there, but we want actual physical buildings that are going to generate revenue down the road for the.
And employment.
Exactly.
Madam Chair, if I could agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Smith. We have a fair bit of drilling activity going on to the south and to the east, southeast. There's also a fair bit of drilling activity on the reserve. And I'm of the opinion that we task administration with the responsibility to do some research on what that could look like. We may want to have some clauses in what we're going to offer that say, you know, subject to improvement because again, we want, we don't want to sell off our raw land for commercial development because again, as Counselor Smith has so capably addressed on previous meetings, they may want to buy the land and just sit on it. So, yeah, we'd have some conditions on it. And I'm totally in support of that. And it might just be the kickstart that we need in that industrial.
Yeah. I'm also totally in favor of that idea. I think you're right. Boldness is what's going to get us there at this point. We need to move in that area. That is an area where we weak. And if we want to see something going on, it's going to take a little bit of effort on our part and goodwill on our part to move in that direction, to attract people. I agree. Counselor Creed?
I am glad that you clarified that because, you know, when I first read that, I thought, well, we've been there and done that because I know the town actually did offer lots for $5 or $10 at one time, I believe, for residential lots. And I think we'd get a backlash from that because of, there are developers, but when you're specifying that to industry, yes, that's very well within the parameters of our community and many communities do that, offer incentives for industry. And, you know, maybe there's specific industries that we'd like to target and that we might even want to send invitations and tell them what we're offering. But I think that was certainly worth looking into to offer and invite industry to locate here and give them an incentive, powerful incentive to do that.
Marian Skow?
Part of that, and these are some of the obvious questions that come to mind, part of that is going to be doing some subdividing, part of it is going to look at the engineering of those industrial areas on the west and on the east. And those are just a couple of comments that I'm sure administration doesn't have to be reminded of because they're highly capable of coming up with those questions in their minds, so.
Does administration require a motion to give you that mandate?
Yes. We would prefer some direction to if it appears that you're looking at developing a land sale incentive policy for industrial and commercial town-owned land. And as well, if you're looking at wanting us to move forward with the infrastructure development of that area, how are we going to fund that, right? So I don't, Counselor Smith had a suggestion, but I don't know if council supports that suggestion.
All right. Maybe Counselor Dell, Counselor.
I have a question. If we've sold a piece of, I'll call it industrial land to an individual today, we implement this policy tomorrow, what's that person going to do? Is he going to ask for some refund?
That was my exact question, so, great question, Counselor. My thinking would be is that we entertain that the policy be retroactive, but again, there'd be some development conditions in it.
Yes.
What those development conditions obviously would look like sort of have to be dependent on council's choice, but I think you're right. To be fair to someone who may have just bought a piece of property, I would think that we might want to make something like that retroactive.
Counselor Smith, would you like to share your opinion?
If I can just add one comment to that, I, we're just kind of whispering here, but administration believes that if we sell the lots for the raw land value and we eliminate that infrastructure cost, is what you're kind of talking about, that perhaps there, that's enough incentive to create that development. And that would be very similar to what we just did with one property because the development agreement says they will pay for the extension of the infrastructure. So, you know, we'll come back with some scenarios and I think that'll help council make that decision.
All right. Is somebody willing to put a motion?
I mean, that's the thing, I think it has to be bold though. I think if they still see a $30,000 price tag on that lot, that's not going to attract them. I think they have to, like this town did, they have the infrastructure and everything in there. I mean, we're looking at making sure that they have a building started within 90 days or something, that there's certain criteria that they have to meet to get that, that deal. So, I mean, I, the lower we can get the property and the cost of it, I mean, the more attractive it's going to be to a business moving in there, I think. And right now, we're not, there's nobody banging at our door to purchase any industrial land at this point, or to set up business in our community at this point.
Are you going to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, or recommend, or ask administration to look at the land or.
Develop a land incentive.
Land incentive policy.
An aggressive land incentive.
Aggressive.
All right. Any other discussion?
I would put in one word, industrial land, not residential.
Yeah, no, residential.
Okay, so that's a small amendment to it.
At this point, I think we'll be residential.
Okay. So with this amendment? All right. So with that friendly amendment, can we vote on this? All in favor? Thank you. All right. There is in your packet 7A7, a policy 76-2 regarding tangible capital asset policy. And this is an amended motion that needs to be recommended for approval. The amendments are on page 5 of 6 of this document. Essentially, it changes the amortization from annual to monthly. And what it does, it will allow that change to coincide with the capability of the actual software program that is used in the town.
Also move.
So it was previously.
Can we accept this policy since I did the original?
Yes. And it was. Yes. And it was already accepted by the audit committee. So, any discussion regarding that? Nothing? Seeing none, should we vote on, on it?
It's a motion to...
Motion to present it to council.
To council, the amended policy. All in favor? Carry it. Thank you. All right. We shall go to 7C, Box and Reg. In your packet, there is a community theater agreement that needs to be approved. Any comments? That was previously discussed. So, it's a draft as a follow-up to previous discussion. The theater association has reviewed it and has, is in agreement with it.
I would so move that this recommendation we need to council.
All right. Any other discussion on the matter? Seeing none, a call for a vote? Are you in favor? Carry it. Thank you. Now, the last of seven, 7D.
Sorry, we can call and see if you can be here at 5:00. The mayor's just suggesting perhaps our delegation be moved up a bit. You're too efficient, Counselor.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. 7D, water treatment plant study. Marion, would you like to talk to this or is Jeff who would like to talk to this item?
No, I will speak to this item. This is just here for council's information. This study was completed in 2012 and we were looking at a number of things. First of all was, you know, what upgrades do we need to make to the plant to keep us compliant with legislation that may be coming in the future that we're aware of or current legislation, as well as looking at what would be the required replacement of the plant, what's its useful life expectancy? So, there's a number of recommendations that were made and all of those recommendations have been put into the budget for '13 or '14. And except for, there is one recommendation that to meet our needs for the next 50 years, that perhaps an additional reservoir will need to be built. But of course, that's not urgent. We have two reservoirs that currently are meeting our capacity with no problem. The other thing that came out of this is that it appears that our plant is sufficient to meet our needs for the next 25 years as a minimum. So, I think that gives us some assurance that we're not going to be looking at a substantial cost for replacement of that facility anytime in the near future. So, that was good to know. But like I said, any other recommendations? Here, for instance, the UV treatment is in the budget for 2013. The filter media replacement, the SCADA and PLC upgrade is all built into the budget for 2013. So...
If I could, Madam Chair, just ask administration, what is the number of the total budgeted work that's being done on the coronation plant?
I'm going to say about $500,000. I know the UV treatment is $300,000. The filter media was $120,000.
Eighty.
Oh, eighty. So, it's a substantial investment. The UV treatment is the, is the most costly. What the report says, and we've known this, we've been trying to find a way to do this other than spending the $300,000. Our water has to be at .3 into U or under .3 into U once it's treated. We're meeting that requirement no problem. So, our quality of water is good. But what the regulations have done is they've changed over time and they've said, okay, you have to have four logs to get your water to under .3. We have two and a half logs. Our water's still under the .3, but we're not, we don't have as many logs as they consider in our treatment. So, the UV will bring us up to over five, about five and a half. So, we'll actually be about one and a half logs above what requirements are. But I just need council to be very clear that it is not a matter of any type of problem with our water. We are meeting current requirements.
And I would say that was an excellent review of our town water treatment facility. And congratulations to Bart and his staff really for keeping the waters such good quality.
He was first, he was first.
I just wasn't sure that I saw in the study, but as they projected the increases in water use, was there a consideration of some decreases initially because of their irrigation line that's been put in? I wasn't sure that I saw that. Did they consider the irrigation line and how?
No, they didn't. What they looked at was the population growth out for our projections over the next 25 years. And it's a fairly low estimate as to what our growth would be. And that, of course, would be based on our historic numbers. As well, they looked at any potential growth development for the county and the fringe areas. And at this point, we don't have a growth study from the county. But again, they just projected a very low increase in those numbers as well. So, you know, those 50-year numbers are built on historic numbers, not necessarily anything aggressive for growth and development.
I'm just wondering if we have any kind of a projection on how much savings on our potable water we might achieve with our, with our irrigation line?
It's not part of this study. We have looked at that as we've been going through the development of that community irrigation line. Yes. For instance, the golf course is on that. They were previously using irrigated water, though, or raw water, sorry. It was just coming from the creek rather than through that system. The one that's, that will be possibly changed in the future that is using potable water right now is, we're hoping to get something up to the temple, right? So, other than that, most of it right now is already on raw water. It's just not a reliable source. Yeah.
May you speak?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to know whether this council has any interest in revisiting the concept of a water commission with the county. I know that that was visited and discussed, oh, probably a year and a half ago. And I am just curious if the council has any interest in revisiting that arrangement of creating a water commission with the county.
Thank you.
I think we're so entwined with the county, I think it would be a good idea to do that. And I have one more comment. In the study that was done, they're talking about population growth. And my question, since we've been as static as far as population is concerned for many years, where's the, where's the growth going to come from?
We're going to sell all that commercial and industrial land, bringing in a bunch of people. No, I mean, seriously.
Like I said, the numbers are based on historical numbers, Counselor. It's not, we're not projecting major growth. Counselor Smith?
Yeah, at this point in time, I mean, our, the real, the only good a commission really does is when it comes time for actually rebuilding.
Facility.
A new facility or, our facility is good for 25 more years. At this point in time, yeah, I'm definitely not in favor of a commission. You lose control over your water facility. I mean, right now, we have full control over where the water goes, where it comes, how it's being operated, you know. And I just, you know, when it's time to build a new facility after 25 years, I'm more than interested in, until then, I don't want to turn control over to a commission.
I personally have the same opinion because of the length of time we can still use our water treatment plant. But I believe there is a time where when rebuilding will need to occur, that we cannot do it on our own. We need the county to be with us.
I agree with that as well. And it seems that we are getting somewhat late in our term here. I would think that this council would be remiss to hang this up before another council comes on board. There's no real pressure, no real need to go into a water commission with the county this time, I don't believe.
No, I don't. Counselor, agree?
Right. Yeah, I think the mayor and I were probably the ones that missed the meeting when they talked about water commissions. So, we may be at a disadvantage. But I feel that the water commission is something that the county wants as a water, you know, to have a water commission. That's my feeling. And, you know, whether we do it now or later, they're more likely to get on board now than when we need a new plant. Maybe it'll be like the swimming pool, when we need a new plant, they won't be interested.
Just need to look maybe at how the regional waste facility is working with the commission as well and how much of a voice that we carry in that as well. So...
Yes.
...arrange it as well before we jump on this one, too.
Counselor Admins, do you have any?
Well, I think by putting a commission in place, we just added another layer. Right now, we can make decisions on our own. If we have a commission, we're going to have to decide on it ourselves, send it to the commission. They're going to have to say, yeah, it's okay, but we want to make these modifications. The thing comes back to council. Whereas now, we can make the decision, it's done.
So, at this point, I see four.
If we ever consider this, we need to make sure that the majority shareholders, so to speak, on this water commission are from the town of Carson, since we are the majority user of that facility.
All right. At this point, I don't really see an agreement towards moving in that direction. So, maybe we want to carry on with 7D2, trunk line funding. And is, Marion, are you going to present this item or is Jeff going to do so?
No, I'll speak to it very briefly and maybe Jeff can fill in any areas that I've missed. So, this is on the sanitary sewer trunk line main extension that we had from the lift station over to the swimming pool. In that project, we had a substantial amount in the contract for what they called...
Provisions.
Provisions. Provisional costs. And as we went through this with the engineer originally, the provisional is something that's unusual in a contract. But because of the condition of the soil in that area and the location being adjacent to the creek and some of those things, the contractor was uncomfortable with some of the unknowns. And so, that's what the provisional was in. So, in the beginning of the contract, we sat down with the engineer and said, okay, what makes sense here for costs? And we, we assumed that we would be using a very small portion of the provisionals. We ran into a couple of problems on the, on the project. First of all, we had a major gas line that was on Second Avenue that was in a location that was unidentified in the beginning of the contract. And so, that caused us a bit of issue we had to work around. The rocky soil, this was something that we had actually determined originally that that rocky soil was going to be a bit of a problem for us. And that's why we built some, some of the provisional into the budget. We had a complication with the tie-in at the corner of Second Street and Second Avenue. And that's where it ties in to go under the creek and up to the lift station. It was actually, the existing pipe was of a different material than our records indicated. And so, that caused them some additional work and expense there. We also had a manhole that was not identified on our mapping and that was hidden underground at the corner of Second Avenue and First Street. So, that would be the corner of southwest concrete on the west corner there, northwest corner. They also ran into a, an area in the dig that had buried concrete. Don't know where it came from, how long it had been there, just had to be removed and it caused some problems with the dig. Then when we got on to Fourth Avenue, there was extra work required. It's actually on First Street between Third and Fourth Avenue. When they lined up the storm drain, it was from manhole to manhole, but the storm line ran a little bit crooked. So, when they went manhole to manhole...
It fit.
It didn't fit. And so, then they had to work around that as well. And then there were several shallow utilities and services on Fourth Avenue that don't get marked originally. Service lines don't, aren't part of your first call. So, it just, with a number of those things, a bit of the provisional that we hadn't accounted for was used for $188,000. And then the GetGate contract then increased to $908,000. We also had an increase of $18,000 for the engineering, additional engineering because of those problems that we had. So, of that provisional plus the added associated engineering contract, came to a total of $246,000 over budget on that project, understanding that that's a substantial increase and to that project. But we do have funding available in that capitalization reserve that will cover that cost. So, we're looking for a motion from council or to approve the over expenditure to come from that capitalization policy. That is one of these, these projects that, as you get into some of those areas, there's a lot of unforeseen. And it's, as the engineer was tracking the costs on this project, he, he assumed with the provisional that we were within budget. So, when we got our last invoice from the engineer with the GetGate, we were shocked to see that it was that much over budget. So...
Counselor Dell?
I move that we recommend to council that the overage on the trunk line construction be approved.
Any discussion? Marion, I have...
Ouch.
Marion, I have, I have a question for you. What will administration do differently in the future when provisions are included in a contract?
Well, I met with the staff and the engineer and we talked exactly about that. How do we avoid this in the future? This is a first contract that we've entered into that had provisionals. Usually, they'll have a 10% contingency for unexpected. But because of the nature of the project, they built this, the contractor and engineer had the provisional. So, we have a couple of options. The reason we tried not to budget for the entire provisional is because it really was an unknown and we didn't want to tax for a project that possibly wasn't going to be expanded. And it was a substantial amount, $350,000 approximately. So, as we move forward, we'll look at those contracts very carefully when they have provisionals like we did this time. But we'll also ask the engineer to inform us of any of those provisional amounts that are being used as we go through the process rather than having it come at the end of the contract. The work's already done. It's too, you know, it's too late at that point. So, we've asked the engineer and we'll ask any other engineers that we work with that that information be brought to us on a more timely basis.
Thank you.
I have a question for Marion. Is there any way in the future that we could do some preliminary work to map where these lines are?
They had, they did do that preliminary work, Counselor. It's, the information is only as good as what the records indicate.
Because I know we had the same problem out here with the storm sewer.
Yep.
We lined up the two manholes.
And they didn't, and it wasn't there. Yeah, yeah. And we had a heck of a time tracing that one even. Yeah. So, we do do that, but some of those older records, and this is a prime example back here, where these lines have been in place for 60 years, you know. And so, the records aren't as accurate as they are today with our new infrastructure.
Well, I just wondered if you could put a bug down there and have it go down the line and then track its path with electronics?
In some, you can put a tracer on them. But, yeah.
Okay. Well, I see you have some plan for the future. So, that is good. Because that was a little bit of a shock. Anyway, we have a motion on the table to recommend a funding of the provision. Short call is presented to council. Are you in favor? Carry it. Thank you. Is our delegation here?
Not quite yet.
No? Okay. So, we can maybe finish our business. Okay, so we can maybe finish our business. We have some item of correspondence. Nine, go ahead.
And I will have my name with my wife, the RSVP for
The Association Professional Engineers and Geoscientists. It was an invitation to the mayor. And the last, but not the least, is a Chief Mountain Regional Solid Waste Authority letter. If I can give you a little bit of my discussion with Marian. I really felt that Mayor and Counsel should reply to that letter and express a different concerns. In fact, what I did, I sent a letter to Marian to kind of review different points because I really feel that there are different elements in the ways they made that decision that is disturbing me. It was done on the email, through email. I brought forward another point that was not part of the question to be voted on. I do not know who selected the questions and who approved them. There is a problem with the governance. There's a problem with best practice. And I outline all that in that letter. So at the next Counsel, Marian will be able to bring forward that letter. You will be able to look at it and see what you think. Marian?
Yeah, I'll just, if it's all right, Madam Chairman, I'll just give you a bit of an update because since this letter went out, I've been in conversation with Lee Beazer to try and come to another solution to this problem. As the letter states, the landfill is closed to construction material until January 1st, and then they'll open it again. We checked with Alberta Environment, Lee, sorry, Lee checked with Alberta Environment to see if they would give them an extension, basically, to have an overage in the landfill this year. And they were denied that. So they looked at another option of perhaps if the Town of Cardston could supply a gravel pit for temporary storage, that Alberta Environment may allow us to either bury it at the gravel pit or truck it from there after January 1st to the landfill. So just be a temporary storage. So I looked into that option. We do have a gravel pit out in Attina, but there's some logistical concerns with that because we would have to man that, we would have to lock it, you know, it'd have to be controlled. So I suggested to Lee, well, if they'll allow us to just store these shingles, why can't we do it at the landfill? Perhaps the town could offer some assistance with manpower, which we did for the last month and a half. We had a person go out Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings to cover so that people could come into the landfill more than the Tuesday and Thursday. And so I said, you know, we could either provide some manpower to assist there, or perhaps we could provide a driver to truck this material. We have staff that have a Class 1 license, you know, we could assist where we could. So the response came back just today from Alberta Environment, and they said the gravel pit is not an option, even though it was their suggestion because it has issues with illegal dumping and that kind of stuff. So it would have to be reclaimed in accordance with legislation, and placement of shingles could delay the reclamation. So, and there also could be a fire involving those shingles. So here was their option. They would allow us to store the shingles at the landfill. They would have to be trucked frequently to a recycling facility in Calgary. So I asked Lee what those costs, where he figured that that would run about $120 a ton for shingles. And the response I got was that either, well, basically, that the town would have to pay the cost of that. We could either increase the tonnage fee for people trucking the equipment to the landfill so that would cover the costs or whatever. I said, why can't we just truck it to Lathbridge? You know, we could send somebody out a couple days a week and truck it cheaper than $120. So he looked into that. That's why I was reading a text. I apologize. That came from Lee in the middle of the meeting. He said Marvin could, he just checked with Marvin Bevins to see what it would cost to truck. So if we didn't use the landfill trucks, it would be about $600 a trip. And then they pay, in Lathbridge, they pay $55.50 a ton. At our landfill, they pay $58.50 a ton. So I think we can come up with a solution if I can get support from Counsel to pay some of these. I might have to supply some manpower or, you know, something like that. But I think between Lee and I, we can come up with a solution. But then the last message I had from Lee was perhaps we need to just leave it as it is until the end of December. But I'm not comfortable with that because it's affecting businesses and people in our community. My other concern, though, is that it is not only Town of Cardston construction material that's going to the landfill. And I don't feel that it's fair that the Town of Cardston be fully on the hook for this. So I'd like some input from Counsel as to how I can go back and deal with this with the
Thing that concerns me, and I don't know whether this discussion has even entered into this whole idea, it's all insurable. Removal of damaged roof materials is insurable for disposal of it. And so there needs to be some possibility for us, if we have the manpower and the truck or whether some private person has the truck and whatnot, the insurance companies need to be on the hook for this and not the town. Because I can just about guarantee you that every contractor that's doing shingling is including hauling away of the refuse, of the shingles, of the rain gutters, of everything that's involved. And they're pocketing it, for the most part, would be my guess. I don't have any authoritative source on that. So all of these insurance claims very likely cover, if they don't, they should, hauling away the refuse from that home, from that roof, or from the town, from the school, whoever it is, to an appropriate disposal site.
Well, that was a little bit the intent in a solution that are offered was that if a contractor brought their material to the landfill, that there be charge, a surcharge for it to be trucked to Lathbridge. And a surcharge, the commission, the authority could have figured it out. But that was refused. And it gave me the feeling that we are a member of an authority that accepts us in a good time, but in a bad time, as a natural disaster, say, too bad, we are not interested and totally divest themselves of all responsibility regarding them, their mandate, which is to take care of waste. And my question to them is, what's your mission? What's your mission statement if it is not to serve the municipalities that are part of that authority? In good time and in bad time? There is no solidarity among the municipality at this point. And I thought, that's rather interesting to me.
Is everything that's burnable being burned?
Yes.
So we're dealing with asphalt shingles and stuff like that?
We're dealing with construction material. You can't take any construction material to the transfer station?
No.
Yeah.
Just clarify that. I understand that if the shakes are taken there without the paper, if they sort out, you know, if they just take wood, they can't take it to the transfer station and for the burn pile. But if it's mixed, if it's mixed, they can't. They can't take it to the transfer station. It has to be taken somewhere else. Just, can I continue on? Because I think Mayor Scow's comments about the insurance coverage is part of the reason that they made that decision because they figure, you know, it's insured, the contractors, you know, they'll haul it and they're covered, you know, by the insurance costs. However, your comments about the mission statement of the Waste Authority is good. I can see that it is a manpower and a trucking problem. They are busy with their employees and their vehicles, just hauling the existing garbage there. But as you pointed out, they could hire a truck to haul it to Lathbridge and just charge it to the contractors. And that, I don't know why that couldn't be an option.
Could have done that very easily.
You know, they could do the hiring. I mean, the town shouldn't be responsible. You know, the insurance should cover the disposal. And, you know, if the Waste Authority is to hire a truck, and so it's all put into one truck and hauled to Lathbridge, and they charge the cost of that, it should be okay too.
We need to make a recommendation for Administration. I really think that maybe if we were to carry on with at least a response to that letter and showing our displeasure and concerns regarding their operation, I think that should be appropriate.
But certainly, Administration needs to get an answer on the insurance to come back to Counsel. And we need to insist on that because that's something that needs to be resolved sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I don't think that from Administration, we want to try to determine who's covered by insurance and who isn't. I think my recommendation to Counsel would be that we go back to the authority and say, this needs to be stored and trucked to Lathbridge, whether it's hired through a private contractor. If the town's going to be responsible, then we want a tipping fee that will cover our costs.
Exactly right.
And if, or the Solid Waste Authority can hire the private company to truck it, just increase your tipping fees to cover the cost. It just seems like it's a fairly simple solution that hasn't been explored.
So then what you're saying is leave the responsibility on the shoulders of whoever's hauling the disposed material to make sure that they pay it extra, and then they go back to the insurance adjuster and get
Yeah, if the Town of Cardston has to hire an independent trucker to truck this material, then all of our costs should be covered for that through the tipping fee, right?
And one final comment. I wholeheartedly support the concept of a best practices study for the Chief Mountain Solid Waste Authority.
I totally agree because to me, it was very poor what
And it was a motion, it was a motion of this Counsel to support the best practices study for Chief Mountain Solid Waste.
Anyway, I see that our delegation is here and
I move it on camera.
Thank you. All in favor? So we will excuse the media at this point. Thank you very much, Channel 32 and Apple.